Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October monthly meeting of the Village Board. October 12. Studio audience and the folks joining us online. This is the meeting when we hear from our departments and standing boards and get an update on everything that's going on around the village. We did have an executive session from six to seven to discuss pending litigation. We have come out of that session by vote and are now entering the monthly meeting, and I would ask first for a roll call, please.
Okay.
Mayor Foley.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Woods.
Here.
Trustee Bozey.
Here.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Trustee Fatty.
Opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items. I have no changes. Anyone else? Okay. Announcements, a few quick ones. Tomorrow is lawn and yard waste pickup, October 13th, Thursday, so put everything out in paper bags. Nothing put out in plastic will be picked up. October 29th is the bulk village-wide cleanup day when Royal will be picking up all sorts and manners of things. There is a list that's gone out. It's on the village website and it's gone out by email. We'll get it up on social media as well for what you can put out and can't. That it's a pretty long can list, so this is the time to get your basements cleared. The Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail has a parking shuttle and survey available now, and the board encourages village residents to participate in that survey. You can access it via our website or the village's social media or the Hudson Highlands Fjord Trail website. And last bathrooms, the bathrooms, the public bathrooms at the bottom of Main Street will be open this weekend. We want to thank Jennifer Carlquist from Bosco Bell for helping connect us to a service that we are sharing with MNT and with Bosco Bell. The village is paying for the service, but it's someone coming through and cleaning all of the facilities. So it's an economical way to do it, and they will be open again this weekend. So thank you for your patience while we got that sorted. And thank you to Jennifer and the Chamber for partnership and sorting out that challenge. Okay. Reports from village departments is item five. Just want to remind the public that all of these documents, all the reports, the official reports are available on our website. We give them in summary here when we're together in the room, but if you want the nitty gritty detail, you can see them on our website. So first is Michelle Escalillo, the village accountant.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Hi. Just wanted to go over a quick few things. So good news, then I started grant application for having four approved high impact like energy actions. The village is going to receive 5,000. We have about 60 days to figure that out. So working with trustee and we'll figure that out hopefully, you know, in upcoming weeks to bring it to the board. The majority of the month was spent getting ready for the audit and then doing three days of field work. EFPR group was on site for three days. They didn't have anything of note to mention. They said, you know, some standard adjustments, nothing really that stood out. They'll do a formal report and then make a presentation to the board for the board to then vote on it. But that'll probably take them, you know, quite a few weeks, you know, probably sometime in December. They'll do that presentation. So the, just a note for the public, I guess, and for us. So since the CCA was stopped with Central Hudson, the bills, we haven't received any. And Central Hudson, everybody knows is having billing problems and this just is on top of it. So if anybody hasn't received a bill from July, that's why, you know, communications went out. But we're experiencing that in the village too. So some of our batches are a little lighter because electric bills have been missing for, you know, a couple of months at this point. And then if any trustees or anybody has, you know, specific questions about accounts, I apologize for missing the monthly meeting last month. I know there's a quarterly review on there. So if anybody wants to go over it or is interested in specific accounts, we can definitely email me, meet with me. You know, we're open, so I want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable with the reports and the financial statements.
Thank you. I think, I think that we did actually, and Jeff was able to talk us through elements in your stead, so thank you to him. I also want to recognize that you, Michelle, have been spending time with the short-term rental ad hoc group. You and Eliza both have been working with, with that working group toward identifying the things that we need to do to have the occupancy tax go into effect, figuring out how we would identify, how we would collect and how the, how that occupancy tax is incorporated into the larger short-term rental portion of the village code. So thank you for the time you're spending on that. Is there, were there any, is there anything that you wanted to say about that in particular?
No, I think that's it. You know, there's just the considerations that, you know, once the drafts for the STR and occupancy tax are up, you know, we have to think about revenues and expenses to help manage it. But I think it's premature to really just, to know what that's going to be until we have drafts of both laws in front of us.
Okay. Thank you for working with them.
Thank you.
Roadways and facilities. Do we have Bugsy with us tonight? No, I think I'll see him. Okay. So roadways and facilities have been very, very busy cleaning out catch basins, getting ready for winter, a large number of them. Let's see, they've been dealing with sidewalks, limbs. The rest is equipment details, but two things to take note of for folks on Northern Avenue. Tonight, we're going to be, I'm going to be asking the board to approve the signing of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Kent for the repair of this failed storm drain on Northern Avenue. That's currently scheduled for November 1st if the board authorizes us to enter that agreement. And the roadway survey, we have talked with the engineers. They've been very busy with the aqueduct connection, but they are also dual tracking our roadway survey so that we go, can spend the winter getting ready for laying out and prioritizing and funding projects in the spring. So that's moving forward too. Specifically related to the town of Kent. So this agreement, it's, it's the intent of the village and the town of Kent to help each other to an equal extent so that no money needs to pass to pay for services or equipment. The idea is each of the departments provides the materials needed for a project and we trade labor where we can. So Kent is bringing equipment for us to use to work on Northern Avenue and labor to do that work. And then our team will go to Kent to help with an equal number of hours. And the idea, the secondary idea here is that it, the relationship acts as a mentoring tool for our highway crew, for our roadways and facilities crew. So the village attorney and the attorney for the town of Kent set out the intermunicipal agreement that's in front of us. And I would ask for a motion from the, first of all, any discretionary questions about the intermunicipal agreement itself. I think it's a great idea. Well, then would someone like to make a motion to authorize me to sign that agreement?
Who?
Second?
Second?
All in favor? Really glad to get this done.
Yeah.
And I'll follow up with contacting the homeowners association for spring growth. Lastly, from Bugsy, we should have had, we had a summer laborer, Mo Williams, who has been with us all summer. He's been doing excellent work. Bugsy, we'd like to shift him into the regular part-time position, the position we created, created in this year's budget. It, so the one really excellent thing about Mo is that he brings mechanical experience. He was, he changed the brakes and the rotors on a couple of vehicles, and that was a spot we were really missing in roadways and facilities. This would be flexible, flexible hours. He does have another, another part-time job. So he and Bugsy are comfortable with working out his schedule on a week-to-week basis. I'm comfortable with that as well. So I would like to make a motion that we hire Mo for the vacant part-time position at a rate of $20 an hour. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. For being with us, Matt.
Welcome to the team.
Yeah. Okay, water and wastewater. Do we have Matt approved?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi. Want to give us an update on the state of our reservoirs and your recommendations?
Well, still pretty much status quo. We lost an additional 5% in the reservoirs from sending water down the hill. So the reservoir status is currently at around 56 and a half as opposed to the 61 and a quarter that we started the month with. But as everyone knows, the engineers are working with getting the connection going on that. So hoping to move forward faster or we get a lot of rain hopefully tomorrow and scheduled. But moving on past that, the bacteriological tests for the month were good. Just went over the reservoirs. Done a lot of in-house maintenance up at the water plant, starting with the pneumatic system. Basically, the air that drives all the actuators, valves, pretty much how the treatment plant works. So we've done oil changes, air filters on the compressors and the blowers. We've replaced two valves, three actuators, four positioners on the all three filtration units to get them back up to running 100%. The dehumidification system that's been offline. Jared and I put some time into it, Jared mostly, and we have it up and running. So it's been running for about a week. We've watched the humidity going down inside the building, so hopefully that'll prolong our equipment life moving forward. The Badger endpoint upgrade, Sax Metering, we had the meeting last week with them on site. They're hopefully trying to get everything generated to get it scheduled before the holidays and get it all wrapped up for the sunset date and at the end of the year. Storage tank's still getting procurement for that, trying to get it. Most people are trying to just do inspections and then talk repairs, so we're probably going to have to go that route to get that moving a little bit faster. And the set basin still needs to be done, but hopefully that'll be getting done in the next week.
Great. It sounds like having an extra set of hands has been a big help.
A huge help, huge help.
So, you know, people have asked about how much rain we got over the last couple of storms. My recollection from right after the storm is you said we got about 0.8 inch, not even a full inch, even after.
Correct. Yeah, we had, yeah, we had about 0.4 the first day of the rain event, the most recent rain event, and then a little bit under 0.5. So yeah, just under one full inch for the month of October so far.
And what is your recommendation for our current water emergency?
Since we are still below, well, currently still under 60%, we're still pretty much holding steady until we can bolster our supply and get back to running a little bit normal. But I mean, we're sending the water down the hills slowly as and efficiently as we can, trying to just make as much as we need without letting it go over the spillway.
So restrictions, you recommend the restrictions stay in place?
Yes, I mean, for this time, I mean, hopefully with the cooler weather and a couple more, more frequent rain events, we'll get out of this faster.
Okay, so no, again, no car washing, no house washing, no, no lawn watering, no garden watering. Please limit your use inside your homes, restaurants. Please don't give water unless requested, tap water unless requested. And just so that folks know, we are, we are keeping an eye on things. The officer on duty today did go check out a couple of locations that were called in as possible violations. They were not. They were locations with their own. They were, they were projects with their own water sources, but we are, we are very much keeping an eye and we are grateful for everyone's cooperation to stretch the water supply we have as long as we can while we wait for the hookup. Thank you, Matt. And going on to discussion of the reconnection to the Catskill Aqueduct, we do have a resolution before us tonight relating to several parts of that project. One is a seeker finding on the reconnection work. The second is the preparation of the land use permit that we need to do the work before the DEC. I'm sorry, for the DEP connection. And the last relates to the preparation of a request for proposals to actually do the work. So Laura, since you've been working on water issues lately, would you mind reading the resolution that addresses all of those issues into the record? And this is a roll call.
Resolution 28.
Yes.
Resolution number 28 of 2022, resolution of the village board of trustees for the village of Cold Spring, authorizing the village to take certain steps in connection with its application for a land use permit to the New York City Department of Environmental Protection. Whereas the village is in the process of seeking approvals for a revocable land use permit from the New York City. It allows the village to connect to the Catskill Aqueduct as an emergency backup water supply. And whereas the village's connection is proposed on land owned by New York City and already utilized for water supply purposes, parcel has an address of number.
380 Main Street, I'm sorry.
Number 380 Main Street.
Yes.
380 Main Street with a section block and lot of 38.14-1-1-17. Whereas the village is proposing to install the necessary water connection equipment within an underground ball around the property. And whereas the village has retained the services of James J. Han Engineering PC to prepare the permit application associated plans detailing the connection. And whereas proposed, the proposed connection includes installation of a six-inch water main and underground concrete structures, which constitutes. Whereas the village's consultants have prepared a short environmental assessment form pursuant to SEGR. But given the minor work involved, the village classified this work as a type two action under section 617 dash point C, 5C1, since there are no substantial changes in the existing facility. Whereas based upon the above, no further environmental review under SEGR is required. Whereas the village is also working with James J. Han Engineering PC and preparing the necessary documents so the village can bid out the work associated with the connection and according to the New York State general municipal law, and now therefore be it resolved by the village of trust, by the board of trustees that the village board of trustees hereby authorizes the mayor to sign all documentations and applications associated with the permit to allow the connection subject to final review and approval by the village's engineers, which are James J. Han Engineering PC. The village board of trustees hereby authorizes the village representatives to submit the permit application once finalized and signed by the mayor. Three, the village board of trustees hereby authorizes the village representatives to continue to work with this engineering consultant in finalizing the necessary documents so that the village can bid out the work associated with the connection in accordance with general municipal law and that the village clerk and our mayor is authorized to sign any documents to effectuate the above. Number four, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption.
Mayor Foley.
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Woods.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty. Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Bozey.
Hi.
Whistled adopted on the date by a vote of 4001.
So just confirming what we've just done here, we have declared this type two under SEGR that if you do, the public wants to review the short environmental assessment form, it is part of the public record. The land use permit, we can now put in what remains or where we are in terms of engineering. There is a flush hydrant that needs to be added near the water treatment plant. That the approval on the final engineering of that is going forward. We're waiting from the final okay from the Putnam County Health Department on the site plan submission that goes along with the permit. So soon as we hear back from, from Putnam County, we should be good on that one. And then the legal agreement, we're down to one final detail and one paragraph related to the dam repair. So we're, we're nearly there on all of it. It all moves apace. And last underwater and sewer mat, water and wastewater mat, reference the endpoint update. So yes, we did meet with Saks.
Yep.
The name of the company, Saks.
Saks.
Thank you. They are looking to do the work. So again, this is the smart technology that, that communicates the information from your electronic meter out to our meter readers for billing and, and efficient tracking of water use. They're aiming to do the work November 7th through the 12th. And we'll be communicating out through the village via our website, social media. They'll be sending direct mailings. They'll be doing door hangers. All of their crew will be with ID badges, their cars will all be clearly marked, and we'll try to get a rough idea of what street they'll be on, which days, and and be posting that. But you should expect to hear from them. Every water meter in the village needs to have this change done. They're very efficient and quick. So they'll do a first round of November 7th to 12th. If there are any that remain outstanding, they'll leave a two-week period to try to close the loop on connections with those folks and then come back and finish up before Christmas, before Thanksgiving. Thanks, Matt. Me out some years good.
Uh, no, I think that'll do it for us.
Have a good night.
You too.
Code enforcement, Jeff, do you want to? Anything from code enforcement that you want to pass on?
No, just Greg, and he's been doing a great job. Staying quote-unquote, he has nothing outstanding for us, so local plans. Permits have been issued. He's been very responsive to any issues with code enforcement that have come up. He, today, he was out delivering letters to local businesses about, you know, just reminding people of the three foot from front of the building rule for for placing objects, and that's just to keep the sidewalk safe, especially on these busy weekends. Supposedly, they are hiring someone to do field inspections to a system, which will give Greg more time on the managerial, on administrative side of things. So these are, things are moving along well on that.
Jeff, sorry. Can you just explain that I get the three feet from the, what's the?
Main Street.
Yeah.
But, but three feet from?
Three feet from the facade of the building out.
If they're allowed to have.
Allowed to signage tables, display goods.
Some areas have been a bit beyond, especially on the weekends. So it was just a reminder, no, no violations are being issued this time. It was just reminding.
Well, yeah, this happens every, every four or five years.
Yeah, yeah. When there are new business owners too, it's helpful to have a reminder. Thank you. Um, part of our police department, Officer Tragulio Burke is with us.
You do? Hi. Few things that I wanted to try to mention so I don't forget. For the month of September, we had calls to service 64. Total for calls to service for the year date is 532. Just want to go over a couple of calls that I always try to bring up that are on an uptick. We had a uptick of calls on 80 cases in the month of September. Some of those were mental health incidents, which I've mentioned at the last meeting, that were seeing an uptick, and I continue to see that as an uptick of people calling for mental health issues. So with that being said, I did meet along with the mayor, with the hub representatives, and also Mike Piazza, who runs the Putnam County Mental Health Department, and we're all in a collaborative agreement to try to get us some more assistance on the side of the county on the best that we can. We're going to be moving forward. It's probably going to be a slow-moving process as it always is, but again, at least we're all meeting, we're all on contact numbers for each other. And with the hub, we also put in an application for a grant. I hope put a grant in for, I believe it was $5,000, and we did also through the, through the village and the police department. So that meaning, if we get those monies, we would be able to call them. They'll be on call. It's not set in stone yet, but what we're talking about is having somebody from the hub be available possibly from four in the afternoon until 10, 11 o'clock at night. And we do have a, a mental health call that we can contact them and get some resources that we may not know about for the, for the individual, for the people that are in this crisis. So that's where some of the monies are going to probably go towards. We're still working on that. Again, it, it, it's just really, really nice to see us all sitting down, getting together, getting, talking to the other side of the county, talking to representatives on what we need on this side of the county and what we're hopefully going to move forward with. Again, this is a ground level right now, and as we keep working towards it, hopefully it will take off and have bigger and better things for us here that we can look forward to. Also, with the 80 cases, we, if you notice, we have a an uprising in officer needs assistance calls. It was 12 for the month. With the aided calls for the mental health issues, some of them were in the village, some of them were outside the village. So basically what happens is the patrol, if it's Putnam County and they get a call for mental, like, it, it goes down as a violent person, they will respond. One of the village officers will respond within reason outside the village. We're not going to go to Putt Valley or anything like that. We're talking about Nelsonville on neighbors. We've had, we've had a few calls in Nelsonville the last past month on that. It's been the same individual. So we just want to make sure that the officers are safe. We want to make sure the person that's in crisis is safe until the ambulance gets there, which they have to wait stage until the the scene is secure, that nobody has any weapons or anything like that. So we've had a little bit extra calls on those. We assisted the MTA on once or twice in the month of September. We also assisted Putnam County MTA, and I believe there was another agency that we assisted. I just can't remember off the top of my head right now. With that, just if people don't understand, when you do mutual aid, it's exactly like the fire departments. We back each other up to make sure the officers are safe at all times and the people that we're trying to service also remain safe. So I know there's been a question on people saying, well, why don't we charge them for this call or that call? Mutual aid is not like that. We need help constantly, not constantly, I should say that way. Well, we need help. The sheriff comes in to help some backs up our officers on different scenes, and we do the same for them. So that's called mutual aid. I mean, that's the best way I can explain it, like the fire departments do.
Well, I will say that there is an essential difference between fire and police in that Cold Spring Fire Company is the, the primary department for Nelsonville and a portion of Phillips Town. That is why Nelsonville and Phillips Town contribute to that budget. But we're, when North Highlands comes to help our team and the fire department, we're not getting charged back in the same way we are providing secondary assistance, backup assistance to other agencies nearby and not, not being charged by the business, right?
Right, right.
So where, where Cold Spring is primary for, for fire outside of the village, those portions of Nelsonville and Phillips Town contribute to the fire budget.
Yeah, the first responders will all help each other out. That's the best way to explain it, especially in these times. Everybody's short. Everybody's short on, on, on members, whether it be the fire department or the police department. I've spoken to different sheriffs and supervisors and superintendents between state police, Putnam County Sheriff, they're all short. We're all short on, on officers out patrolling. I'm not going to speak of the sheriffs, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just saying it's hard to, you know, retain people who are getting ready to retire and to bring in people to the process that we're bringing in. So we're, we're all here together to help each other out, make sure we all get home safe at the end of the day.
And also another report out from that meeting with the hub and with Commissioner Piazza. There is a new deputy commissioner for, for mental health at the county level. She comes from Westchester. Cannot pull her name out of my head right at the moment. Just consummate professional and is hoping to, it's clear that Putnam County is very behind and very, very much lacking in services, and she's hoping to replicate some of what she was able to do in Westchester here in Putnam. And one of the things that she's instituting right away, which I think is brilliant, I don't know why we haven't been doing it before, is that working with police agencies and social services and mental health and ambulance corps, et cetera, identifying who folks are who are frequent, frequently, frequently needing help and how those folks are interacting with different agencies. So we had a discussion the other day about a particular, you know, case being addressed by different agencies, and those agencies didn't know that the others were involved. So having this sort of collaborative team to, to share notes so that we're sure that the folks who are needing the help from multiple agencies are getting more holistic response. That's, that's a good thing. I think it's going to work well.
We're on the same, same page. Right now, if you want to go that way, one person does know what's going on and the other, like you said, with the county and then help between. We're on the same, the same page. Right now, the, if you wanna go that way, the, one, one person though doesn't know what's going on in the other, like you said, with the county and then help between cold care, uh, Putnam County Mental Health and, and the, and the police, uh, agencies. So we're, we're definitely gonna be working on that going forward, which she, she has already said she's gonna come out and do a couple of visits with me on some of the people that really need help, have been needed help for a while. Uh, and actually really look at the situation and see what we can do. Um, and that will help us, uh, going forward.
I felt hopeful after meeting with her.
Yes. Um, also with the eighty calls, just to let you know, eighty calls are basically anytime the ambulance is called out, we go, uh, in, in the village. So that, that's just sometimes you see the numbers are a little, little high, and that could be anything from a person falling down and just needing a lift assist or somebody that, uh, needs actual medical help. We go out to all those calls. So those are the ones I was looking at, uh, the grand proposal we spoke about. Um, we had two arrests in the month of September. We had uh, one for an unlicensed operator, which is VTL five eleven you see on your page. Uh, and that was one count. He had a suspended driver's license, so he was, he was brutally arrested. Um, and also we had a criminal trespass. We had an individual go down to the highway garage, park, park his vehicle there, who also had a suspended license, uh, and decided to urinate, uh, on our property down at the highway garage. So we talked about this in the past about people just wandering down there. This is just another example of it being open and people just walking down and doing whatever they, they please. The moving violations, we had fifteen moving violations for the month. We had eighty-two parking summonses, we're told ninety-seven, and a total for the year is six hundred and ninety-one. Um, a couple of extra things that I, we're working today that I addressed. I just wanna let the people know who are listening. Uh, there's a company that's been walking up and down, um, on Route nine D. He has a, uh, yellow vest on, he's got proper identifications, and he's going over all of the power wires that are on the poles. I, they started up past Butterfield and he worked his way down past the, uh, softball field on nine D.
He's working for the DOT?
He, he working for this, the, the, it's not the DOT, he's working for the state, and he's just actually, I guess, looks like he was taking film of the, uh, or photos of the power lines. I didn't press him on it. He had proper verification. I know people were a little bit worried about that. Also, speaking of that, we had a poll that was, uh, put out front of Village Hall that everybody seemed to notice and got a little nervous about, including myself. Um, and it was actually a private company that was, um, hired out by, uh, the, uh, state to do a traffic survey of vehicles turning on Fair Street and vehicles going up and down Main. Uh, I've actually been driving around, pass, outside the village, Nelsonville, and up towards the, up to the, towards the Highlands, and they put down all of those new, uh, counting car strips. There's a lot more out. They're on Peaceville Road, they're on Fishville Road, they're like all over. This thing did the same thing, but it, it took a picture of the cars instead of having that rubber strip that we've all run over on occasion.
When was, when was that? When was it out?
Sorry?
When was it out?
Oh, that, the poll was out there about three days in total, maybe, maybe a little longer.
It was just two, it was very brief, but there was no communication from anyone. So suddenly there was installed in front of, with, clearly with a camera in front of Village Hall, and I'd like to, I know that you have the, the company's cell phone number. I'd like to follow up with that, um, and understand how those, what, what are they doing with images? What, those are village streets. It's not a state road there. I'm, I'm still quite confused about what that was.
Yeah.
I can understand the county roads, it being on the county roads, um, but I don't understand why it was on the village road if it was DOT.
I will try to get more information on that, um, uh, that's, you know, going forward. I'll see if I can get a hold of that.
Thank you very much.
Uh, and last but not least, we've seen a big uptick in, uh, I wanna call them boat people, but that's not, that's not, not, uh, proper. Uh, C Street is coming. We have a lot more people coming off the boats. Uh, I think, believe, over the weekend, we had the highest number was three seventy-five. Uh, that came off, I think, on Saturday.
So that's within the, the, the range that was approved by the board. We said cap at four hundred.
Yeah, and what they're doing is they, they had four, they had four hundred and change, and they dropped a hundred and twenty off at Bear Mountain, so they never even made it to the village. But we're gonna see a bigger uptick as this is the month of October, the leaves are changing, you need a lot more people that are coming on the boat. We had no incidents so far with, with any, any, um, source from the boat or anything like that. So we're, we're still moving ahead with, with that. And we have the walking tour, the extra officer that's on duty, that C Street covers when, uh, when they come in. And that's all I.
Thanks. Um, thank you too, to you guys for helping with. We've had a number of buses coming down Main Street. Not letting anyone know that they're coming, buses that have, they're way, way too big. Police buses? Yeah, big, big buses and having to get them to navigate them out, and the officer who is on duty inevitably does that navigating. So thank you for that. Um, I wish that there were a way that we could communicate out to these companies. Um, I mean, we've attempted, but to let them know that it's not a safe place to bring a big giant bus.
Is there any, um, enforcement that can be done on that front? I mean, I, I did see one of those huge buses go down and we were all just shaking our heads, cuz.
Yeah, I, I'm kinda like, if, if there's something that's wrong with the bus, either equipment wise or anything like that, we can look at, at doing some type of enforcement, but you figure if you pull over the bus and you're trying to look at the equipment, you're gonna try and someone's gonna take that much longer to get them off Main Street.
What about just, just even trying to do like a U-turn, which is I believe what I was witnessing?
We try to, we try to, if we're there on scene, we try to attempt to do the safest way we possible, which you take them down a little Main Street, try to have them back up to Depot Square and then back out again. Uh, some of these bus companies are actually, uh, some of them don't speak English. Uh, and it's a little hard to, to, uh, get them to do what you want them to do, but like I said, the officers usually do a pretty good job. One, we know that it's happening. There's sometimes we might be out on a job and, you know, all of a sudden the bus is down there, we don't get a call, we come in and, you know, we find, we find this whole, this whole backup thing.
Well, this is a, a moment to plug again, this is something, say something to the public, um, please. I, I know it feels good to spout on Phillips Town locals, but the officers don't know that they're needed if you're not calling us, calling the police department to let us know there's a bus or whatever the issue might be. Please, if you, if you see something, contact the police, something you need help with, contact the police department.
Want the officer right then, if there's something that you need him for, if you don't, I mean, if it's not emergency, you call nine one one, but wait to get connected to this officer's cell phone. We carry cell phone on us, every officer does, and that gets you direct, cuz we come up, I've come up in the end of the shift at three thirty, and there was a phone call at eleven o'clock saying they needed assistance on something. It wasn't emergency, it was a blocked driveway or whatever. You will have a prompt where you can hit the button and it'll, it'll ring the cell phone that the officer's carrying, so we know that you need us now. I can't wait till the end of the day, go up and then you're wondering what we're doing.
Hey Larry. Um, and would you like to talk us through, um, uh, Police Officer Ciro's, um, current request?
Yes, Officer Ciro has been with the village, I believe approximately twenty-seven years now, somewhere around there. Um, and he's decided that he wants to put in his retirement papers, so he can get his pension. So he gave us, uh, his resignation, which is, you know, we're kind of a retirement notice, uh, effective October third, two thousand and twenty-two. And he also submitted a letter that he would like to be reinstated as of the fifth, I believe, Jeff?
Yeah.
As of October fifth.
Can you explain why that structure exists?
It's not, it's, so the, the officer can, uh, basically all, all the time that he's worked in the village, he's built up a pension. So what he wanted to do now and, um, is to retire from that, collect his pension, and then be rehired by the villages of per diem. Per diem basically is any, any law enforcement officer in the state of New York that collects a pension, like myself. We retire from our, our, my, as I did, I retired from a full-time job, I get hired by the village to come, and when I come in, I only get paid per diem. You're not paying any more retirement funds from myself or any other law enforcement. So in fact, it would save the village money if we did hire Officer Ciro Bat or Tom Ciro at this point, hire him back. Cuz he's been here, uh, he's had no issues whatsoever, any discipline there. I've been here in ten years and since I've been the officer in charge since two thousand and seventeen. Uh, he's an excellent officer and, you know, he, he, to lose him, we'd be losing experience, obviously, that we have that knows the village, knows the people that live and work here.
So the idea is that he retires from full-time work, collects his pension.
Correct.
He is limited, all officers, a, a, a number of categories of public servants in New York State are limited in the amount that they can earn in a year.
Correct.
Up to, so they hit a ceiling, they, beyond which you cannot fund your pension. So he, add on a per diem basis can work up to his ceiling while collecting his pension.
Correct.
And we're no longer paying into his pension.
It's procedural formality required by New York State Retirement System. So he has to be off the payroll. I believe it's two business days in order for them to process and everything, so that he can start collecting his pension. And that's why we do it like this. We've done it in the past with other officers, quite a few of them.
And it's cheaper for us because we're not paying into the system anymore.
When we stop paying into the system, he could collect his pension, and the only downfall, there is a cap on how much he can earn.
Correct.
Well, how much he can earn over the course of the, I think it's how much you can earn, not now.
How much you can earn over a calendar year?
Yeah.
But now we have a larger number of officers on duty. There's possibility for him to retire.
Yes.
Right, cuz he doesn't have to carry the weight of as many shifts. Any discussion of that request? Okay, um, is this a roll call or just a motion and?
Motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we, um, accept the resignation of Police Officer Tom Ciero effective October third, and that we, uh, reinquest, re-esp- reinstate. Tom Ciero is a police officer in the village effective October fifth. Like a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Fire company. I've got, got an old pack. Can I look on with you? Hello, Chief?
Wow, seventeen calls last month. Now that the colder weather's here, just before you fire up your wood stoves and fireplaces, whatever, check your chimneys.
Yeah.
Smoke detectors, carbon dioxide. Try to keep those call numbers down for us. And that's all I got.
Change your batteries, right?
Yep.
Um, you've been, you've been doing a ton of mutual aid.
Yeah, it's just the way the month went.
What is AFA, North Highlands, for an AFA?
Uh, fire alarm.
Activated fire alarm?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? There's just that the brush fire, what's?
It was called a brush fire. It was a campfire that was already out at, uh, I wanna say a little Stoney Point, but I'm not positive.
Okay.
So it wasn't like a true brush fire.
Okay, but it could have been. We're lucky it wasn't.
Nothing, nothing to worry about.
Not a tended fire. By the way, there are no, there are to be no fires lit at Stoney Point for the record, correct? No, can't, no fires allowed. Yeah, especially in a drought, especially in a drought. Okay?
Brush fire slash dead body.
Yes. Multiple iterations of that story went to the village pretty quickly. None of them, none of them true. Um, okay, justice court. Um, so what Officer Burke reported in terms of uh, vehicle and traffic violations are reflected in the, the court report this month. Um, twenty-one charges, one penal, the rest for traffic, eighteen defendants. Income of eight thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. Okay, standing boards. Um, I believe Sean is not with us this evening, just very quickly, um, H R B. Um, it's been, it's been slow, um, on all of our boards. I think that the interest rates are, are hitting everybody. There's it's not, there aren't as many applications as we might see in other, other times. H R B looked at a two-story addition on twelve Parrot Streets. Um, and I wanna thank the, the store district review board because, um, now that we are all required to have quorum in public, we were all on Wednesday nights. They were able to accommodate us by moving to Tuesdays so that, um, we don't have overlap for the, for the recording and broadcast system. So thank you to them. Planning board, I believe we have Chairman Goldstein with us.
Hi. The planning board was largely occupied in September. Um, and various proposals, uh, at forty Main Street, we approved through a public hearing a change of the site plan, and we are considering now, uh, and will tomorrow night, uh, be acting on a, a public hearing for a, an additional change of use. Um, other than that, we, we were occupied during the month with a preparation for the joint, with preparation with the joint uh, planning board and, uh, village trustees meeting on, um, Hudson Highlands, New York. That was pretty much it for the month.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, ZBA had no activity, but I will say that, um, Chair Worth and I met with, um, a couple of interested villagers for the open seat on the ZBA, they hated by trustee Bozey. We will be making a recommendation to the trustees for next week, um, two really excellent candidates. So, um, we'll get that on the agenda for next week. Um, tree advisory board, um, no report. Jen isn't able to join us, and she asked Eliza, um, to share about an initiative for tree pits.
Yep, um, so we've been working, this sort of started last year with the adopted tree pit program. That was a collaboration between the tree advisory board, which served as, um, sort of an advisor on how to plant the pits to support the health of the trees. Um, and then the chamber was, um, a major component of helping organize volunteers, getting volunteers and, um, sort of getting everyone to come. Um, and part of that initiative started with, um, the Cold Spring in Bloom initiative that the chamber proposed last year and will be continuing hopefully next year. Um, the idea was to have the tree in bloom in April. Um, but because only bulb bloom at that time, we didn't have anything last this year. So, um, in continuing of that program, we want to put bulbs in to all the tree pits that are, that don't have bulbs already. Um, and the chamber has offered to sponsor all the bulbs, um, which was very generous of them. The tree advisory board is going to continue to sort of advise how to plant appropriately, not to damage the roots. Um, and we have a new volunteer, um, Erin Muir has stepped up to help organize volunteers between the village volunteers and the chambers volunteers to make sure everybody knows where to be at what time and how to do it. Um, so that's, uh, really exciting. If anyone wants to volunteer to help plant bulbs, um, we're aiming to do it in November, hopefully mid-November. Um, the latest you can plant bulbs is early December, but it has to happen before the frost, so we hope to get this done before then.
Awesome, thanks. And, um, the rec commission asked for that to be extended down around the bandstand as well, for some fresh volunteer on the bandstand and, um, see the, the board and the chamber, sorry, the C, C tab, the tree board and the chamber are working on that too. Thank you very much. Um, Jen will have an update for us. She said she would follow up with a report on the Baskerville Tree Initiative when she has it. Um, Recreation Commission, a few things with REC. Um, we have a couple of things to close out. We tabled an event last week pending clarification on, uh, speakers, tents. And, uh, in the meantime, they requested podium, so they're modifying the application. This is the Phillips Town Democrats, um, wanting to have two small speakers, um, and a tent over them if it's raining, and they forwarded a, um, plan of McConville Park, where they would like to put a stage in four by six by fifteen inches. We have run all of these things by the rec commission, and Lily and the rec commission had no problem with that, right? So with that information, um, any additional concerns? Um, we have a motion. Um, so the motion is for the, the approval of the application with the modifications of speakers. Sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Tents and this, and the sound and sound.
So I'll make a motion for approval of the Phillips Town Democrats, uh, event on October twenty-third. With the, uh, changes in uh, in application, well, application, okay, second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in.
Any opposed? You know, um, and the other, I don't have paperwork for, but we also approved an application last week for, was it last week, two weeks ago? For, um, a birthday park at, um, Mayor's Park. And when the insurance papers came in, there was insurance for ponies. Ponies were not part, part of the application. Um, so Lily on the event coordinator followed up with the applicant, um, and with the rec commission to make sure the rec commission was okay with that. Um, they are so long as, um, the ponies stay in the pavilion portion and not on the playing field. Um, and that everything is cleaned up after the ponies, and that if there is any grass restoration, the applicant will be responsible. The applicant has agreed to all of those things. So looking forward, just making sure that, that the trustees are comfortable with
looking forward, just making sure that, that the trustees are comfortable with what the board, the, excuse me, the rec commission has, has said okay to them.
We just um discussed continuance of dogs off leash with a permit, is there?
The point is they'll be on lead.
I know, but just
dog, the
Oh, she, she requested the use of both Mayor's Park, the pavilion area and the field, and her thought was that the field would then be closed, that public would not be down there, I don't think she understands that, you know, if somebody wants to walk their dog.
The park, we're not gonna, we can't close people on there.
I don't have a sign that says fields closed, I only have a sign that says pavilion closed for the pub, to the public, so. Um, so I will reiterate that to her, she said that they're, they that was her idea and that the only thing that they were really gonna do on the field is maybe a pickup soccer game in that far back corner at towards the end, it sounds like it's going to be a very small party.
So a magician involved, I know that.
A magician now involved.
It's kind of a birthday party, yeah.
Yeah.
But your concern is about dogs off leash?
I, yeah, yeah, just that they had thought through a way to, i- if they recognize that there could be dogs at the same time, so.
Well, the one thing with Mayor's Park, the dog, the dogs are usually on the major part of the field and there is that fence area, so you would hope that whoever's with the dog, even though the dog is off lead, the dog, they will have some control of their animal. Um, I will mention that to her when I email her tomorrow to tell her that everything is fine and dandy, hopefully, um.
And make sure that she passes that information on to the what is one of the pony, pony wrangler? How many ponies?
Nope.
I think it's, I imagine it's a small number, it's a small, small party.
I think she said, I think she said there's only gonna be like eight kids at this party, five kids at this party?
Hold a meeting until I get pony show.
Like, does anyone have any, do you have any, Laura, does your concern extend to wanting to decline?
No, I just mean like making, making sure that the pony company knows that it's a public park and that there's the potential for dogs and.
Okay.
Do we have any, I mean not to be like a pervert, but like has this ever happened before, like have we ever, has?
Not that I'm aware of, not that, I mean, not, not in my time, living in the village, the, the rec commission felt and they've, at least two of the rec commission members have been members for thirty years. Um, they had, they didn't have hesitation about it so long as the applicant understood that they would have to um replace any damaged lawn.
We did have a horse incident about a year or so ago down on at the bandstand.
Right.
Mike.
Do you know anything about that?
Yeah.
He's not even lifting his head. Oh. Canadian, not even lifting his head. Um, that was not in the park, however.
No. Believe the application. Our applications allow.
Yeah, on the, on, in the policies and procedures as part of the application form, there is a paragraph that talks about live animals.
And the need for insurance.
And the need for insurance, it's, it's in the same area as the inflatable, the wow, that stuff. And that's what happened, she read, she asked me for information about the insurance she needed for the pavilion and I literally said, well, this is the quote about in the policies and procedures that you received with the application, she must have went back to check it. And she saw the paragraph about the live animals and said, oh, I can have money.
Good idea. Well, I have asked Jeff, um, I can't believe how much time we're spending on this, I have asked Jeff, um, Amato and Lillian to create a section of the application that asks for specific activities, installation of toys, live animals, et cetera, um, so that we're, we're not caught unawares again. Um, you know, I'm sure at this point the child knows and my thought is not wanting to break the child's heart.
Yeah.
So, okay, so uh I would make a motion to allow um the use of ponies at this party and um to request the rec mission and the event coordinator to modify the application as appropriate. So good, all in favor?
Wow.
Okay, last thing on rec is just letting you know, we are um proceeding with Haldane on the um shared use agreement of the parks at of the fields at Mayor's Park. Haldane has just sent back um a revised inter municipal agreement, I need to send it to the attorney, then we'll be on our agenda for, for approval. Um, okay, but on rec. Um, I don't think, I think the Phillips Town has a workshop tonight, I don't think we have Bob with us, right?
No.
Um, I would just say highlight, one highlight from Bob's report is congratulate villager Tony Bartis for being appointed to the conservation board. Um, so the deputy supervisor report is in the record, people would like to read through it. Um, from the legislator, coming back to some of the issues that Larry raised earlier about um mental health, the county is in its budget cycle right now, a one, nearly one hundred and eighty million dollar budget um is proposed for the county, it's better contrast with what we deal with on the local level. Um, it's a, a million point three increase over last year's budget. Legislature Montgomery did ask for um twenty-five thousand dollars to develop a mental health first aid program. Um, for training for communities all across the county. Um, one of the things that we discussed in our session with the commissioner the other day is supporting neighborhoods and um that are, are experiencing neighbors with mental health issues and, and, and helping everyone in the community around, um, and also preparing, preparing folks on their own to deal with um someone who might need help in their lives. So this program was proposed by legislature Montgomery and it was um roundly um dismissed by her colleagues. So, let's, we'll see where the rest of the hundred and eighty million goes. We could use, we could definitely use more support, mental health at the local level. Okay, report of the trustees. Um, Laura, you want to tell us about water stuff you're working on and the EV charger?
Yeah, um, so on water, um I'm working with um language from Beacon that creates a um kind of a ratcheting up system for how to um address a water, a drought water emergency, rather than we just have kind of on or off, but this will create levels of increasing amounts of restrictions. So um sort of language, um, I've talked with Matt um uh and gotten feedback and so hope to have something in the next for a while.
Awesome.
Um, uh, yeah, EV charger, if it's okay, um Martha, can I introduce Martha Upden?
Hi Martha.
I don't, um, you have patiently waited through this meeting, so Martha is um uh the town of Phillips Town's new climate smart coordinator and um just a real asset to the town and um uh that, that we're part of. Um, so it's leading the overall work on climate smart, um, we're collaborating in a number of ways, one of them is on this EV charger um that against town funding, we would collaborate to cite it here on the village. Um, we're still working on the language for the um uh site agreement, don't have it yet to share, but expect to in the next couple of weeks, we need to have it signed and very willing to do it by the end of the month in order for the town to get it funded.
And you did a, a site visit and explored some options, right?
Yeah, that's right, so um, so we did a site visit with a couple of representatives from Central Hudson and also had an electrician. Um, uh supervisor Van Taffel was there, Martha and I. Um, and we were looking at a couple of locations, um, the municipal lot, um, Mayor's Park. Um, you know, what looks to the kind of layman's eye as a great location, then you hear from the utility company that that pole is fully occupied and is not an option, or you know, would have to, it would trespass over private property if it went through the air, I mean, things that honestly I had never considered, so it took some things off the table and added some new ones, I think at this point we're trying to figure out what's viable, the good news is that Central Hudson pays ninety percent of the installation costs, as long as we follow their rules correctly, so we're making sure that we do that, and it means that even if it is something that has a high installation cost for us we're paying ten percent and dividing it by both municipalities, it comes out to be pretty affordable, also we have grants through that, those nicer to clean energy grants, so you know, I, I think the cost will be okay, we just have to figure out something that turned out to be fairly complicated. Um, uh, and um, so I'd love, I think that in the next couple of weeks we'll have the details to be able to share, um, share with all of you.
And you had a, um, you had a public meeting this week?
Yeah, um, uh, so we had a webinar, um uh, we had a webinar that was kicking off this, this heating and cooling campaign in collaboration with the state. Um, and uh it was successful, we had about thirty people um turn out and listen for the whole hour and a half, which was really impressive. Um, and, and now, um, again, we're looking for five places, uh, install a heat pump or do an energy efficiency audit and upgrade and the village gets five thousand dollars, um, climate wins, uh, it's a good program. Um, and there's uh more information on the village website about that.
Is the presentation that was made available on the website or do we have a link for it?
Um, it will be uploaded onto the website. Um, uh, right now the town of Phillips, a, a previous one is available there too, and maybe there's a way, we could probably maybe Jeff, I could work with you to make a clear link on the village website.
Yeah, just on the web of the presentation.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, and maybe I'll just say, since uh Martha made me think of it, I mean, I think the next, we're getting our head wrapped around all the clean energy communities grants and, and all of that, and then I think the next phase that we can move toward is um looking at climate, becoming a climate smart community, which would be, I think, a great thing that we would support in general, and then the, the plus for us on the funding side is that it would give us more points if we um uh they offer yearly um uh grants, uh, we'd be more competitive for them. And they're on mitigation side, the kind of clean energy side, but they're also on the adaptation side, so we could look at one that's dealing with stormwater or some of the other impacts that we're seeing along the coastline, so um I think that's something that um I'll be chatting with Martha about and others in the village that are engaged on climate smart.
Cool, Martha, thank you for working so closely with the village in collaboration, do you have anything to add? Nope. Okay. Uh, your tweets, good.
Can I ask you a question? Um, on the EV chargers, is that for all?
Kind of like all brands?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, yeah, 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 it'll be all brands.
Um, so uh I think it was kind of touched on earlier, um Catherine and I and um Jen's Wireick met with Granicus again and got another update from them, we got more in depth on how their um modules that support tax collection work. Um, and we got um, yeah, more detailed information about how um the different modules work together, so you can track um who's compliant, how much usage is being done, how much tax is owed generally. Um, and you know, they continue to impress us, we, we've walked in there with a lot of questions, they answered all of them. Um, and we've brought, we had met with Michelle as well to get her questions, because she was um concerned about things that she needed for proper recording um of tax collection. So um they can provide everything we need generally, um, and so we're looking to uh next sort of writing a room tax legislation to look at for the board. Um, and then Jen is also working with the F T R group to update the F T R code, so we'll have more on that.
Later.
Awesome.
Um, and I think that's it, I'm kind of working with Catherine and you, Bethany, to do a parking evaluation of Main Street as a preliminary to get meters up, but we, we're just starting.
Calendar, too.
Yeah.
Um, but I will say it's um, it's been very helpful to have, to have you looking at crosswalks and actual counts and finding if you've been identifying spots where we could possibly extend um parking locations, it's been, it's been very helpful, thank you. Your tweets?
Oh. Um, well, I was working on vacation, um, so that's what I've been doing for, for a bit, but um I've been working mostly on internal stuff in terms of staffing and internal management of processes and such in the village, so it's not, not glamorous, pretty necessarily visible to all, but it's solely making changes and, and um helping to make the, the work that, that our folks do um shine in its glory and um and help the village work better and more efficiently, so you know that's the kind of stuff that I've been doing recently.
Thank you.
I will have more to report.
There's um, there's very little about any of these positions, it's glamorous, just in case anyone's. Okay, I have a couple of small things to report on short-term rentals. Um, there was a federal appeals court ruling in Louisiana recently that may have ramifications on our code writing, um it struck down restriction of owner occupied S T Rs only. Um, but that has been forwarded to the village attorney and the short-term rental committee. Um, I know it's been under discussion in Ryan Beck, but seeing what modifications need to be made based on that ruling, which sets legal precedent. Um, the Sandy Galeiff grant, final documentation will be in by the end of the week, I did have a conversation with the main ways and means um staff member who is moving that grant forward, um, and feel really good about the conversation. Um, and last, which is really excellent news, um, so the uh code update was partially funded with a grant from NYSERTA. Um, the chapter one thirty-four, the zoning code was not completed, um, we have been working with a small working group on finalizing that and did ask for an extension from NYSERTA, and today they agreed to give us until the end of June, um, which is great. Um, the that, that code update working group with the current zoning board chair, the former zoning board chair, um, member of the former code update committee and our village planner has been meeting every two weeks. Um, and looking toward revising our zoning code in ways that are more in keeping with the vision of the comprehensive plan and the L W R S in terms of um form-based zoning um and rationalizing the code in ways that make it more um user-friendly for the built reality of our village, um, so I'm very pleased that we have that extra time, we have to use it very wisely. Um, and so tomorrow's session will be given over to tightening, tightening our timeline and making sure we meet that deadline, but I'm, I am much relieved um with that, because that is budgetary relief. Anything for me on that? Um, we have a little bit of board business, um, we were approached by the owner of thirty-seven Fair Street, the formal, former in Politiere. Um, uh, car dealership, which is now a living space and an art studio at the end of Northern Avenue on Fair Street, we've been approached about selling um village property behind that parcel that abuts um the highway department, several trustees did a site visit, wanted to get your feedback from your site visit.
Um, yeah, I, the property is kind of squished between backyards and the back wall, back sort of shelf of the highway department, and there's really nothing that could be done with that piece of land, it, it really just looks like an extension of their backyard.
It's kind of landlocked.
Yeah, so I don't see that selling it would harm the village in any way or prevent any future developments that we, you know, chose to do on that highway department a lot or something.
Same way. I have photos, but honestly, I don't think you could, it's hard to really see property lines, but.
And, and I did the site visit as, as well, I feel the same, um, m- my concern would be how, the one concern I have is the retention of, of the slope down to the highway department, um, and I know it had been discussed with her um previously that as condition of the sale would be the installation of a retaining wall. Um, so we would need to have further conversations on that, um, so, so tonight we would be um taking up the question of, are we declaring this, this property surplus and are we willing to sell it and the price at which we will sell it, and we have been selling properties at four dollars and sixty-five cents um since January, when we were advised a new price by the town assessor. So, um, would someone like to make a motion? So, would someone like to make a motion? That sufficient? Go ahead.
Well, you should do this in stages, declared surplus property.
Okay.
So then, it doesn't have to be roll call, but just individual, yeah, individual vote, and then for the sale price.
Okay, I make a motion to declare the property surplus to the village.
Second. All in favor? I, any opposed? Okay. What's the second piece in addition to the price?
Price.
Oh, so price, establishing the sale price. I'll make a motion to establish the sale, the sale price consistent with. Other recent sales of village property at four dollars and sixty-five cents a square foot. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. And that's everything. Oh, and the retaining, the retaining wall will come back as a condition of the.
You can say it now that.
It will be a condition?
Yes.
So I would make a motion that the construction of a retaining wall be condition of the sale.
I asked, well, no, just that we discussed it briefly on the site visit and my reflection was that they, that they wanted to do. Kind of identify whether it was necessary. Which is not surprising, rather than make it an automatic condition to create one, so. I, anyway, I, that may be part of a discussion.
I think, I think our, it, it can be a discussion. We'd have, we could, we could have, but I think we have to. We have to watch out for the interest of our property down flow.
I, I agree, but, and I wonder if there's a way, do we. Does our motion need to incorporate that discussion or do we, or do you want to make it?
Is it a concern about a wall in itself? Like, are you thinking about leaving it open for alternative? Methods or? Would you like to amend the motion?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to think through, like, if. It sounds like our motion is requiring, is requiring a wall, and maybe that's.
You could table that portion of it and maybe ask the engineers to weigh in.
No, that's a good idea.
I, my understanding was that they wanted to, once they knew that they could purchase it, then. They would do, and then like, they would have it evaluated.
We want to have our engineer make that conclusion.
I would agree, yeah. I think it may need a, I think we're being prudent.
Yes.
Making sure that the wall is structured maybe, so I'm, I'm not pushing back against that.
Understood. So we will table the portion related to retaining wall pending consultation with the engineer?
For what it's worth, the previous board, there's the initial discussions was in favor of. A retaining wall there as protections for the highway department property.
And if everyone else wants to move forward with it, as. As you first proposed, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
Well, I think that it's worth, the point you raise is worth looking at for this reason. It is, it is a very large slope. It could be a very large wall. And there may be other design solutions for slope retention that don't require. A wall of that size that might be more. Might have, be, be less impactful from, from a visual perspective, so I, I think it's reasonable to ask the question.
Or one may advise a certain height wall, or, you know, it's great to have some specifications.
Okay, thank you for that guidance, clerk. We have reached, oh no, minutes, approval of minutes. No, what have I skipped? Oh, ticketed event. So. The REC Commission had a, an initial conversation with. Lauren from the Cotten County Wine and Food Fest, it just happened in August. I think there was some miscommunication on the part of the REC Commission because it. They communicated to her that the village was considering not holding events at Mayor's Park and that she should instead. Apply for dockside. Is that an accurate assessment of the conversation? Event coordinator, Lillian, okay. My feeling is that, first of all, this is very early to ask for, but secondly. What I intended in that conversation was that we have Michelle compile. Our income versus expense, including staff time. See if we are actually making money on these events. Yeah, so my recommendation, she's, she's eager. And she does note at the bottom that she would prefer Mayor's Park. My recommendation is to table this. Complete, make a formal request to Michelle to compile those numbers and reassess after we have. That, and we do that analysis. Okay, so I've made the motion by second, all in favor? Okay, now we're at minutes. I gave changes to Jeff for eight twelve. Does anybody else have any revisions? Based on make a motion?
I mean, motion can include amendments of eight twelve, maybe do.
Second? A second, all in favor? And there you go. No changes? So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of eight thirty-one. All in favor? Do we have bills? So you, we do have staff, yes?
I have the older. Make a motion to approve. Bills batch number six, the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred thirty. Seven and eighty cents.
All in favor? Thank you. There's no public left. Would any of you remaining in the room? No questions? Okay. Anyone in the room?
I'm gonna hold you to that tomorrow.
In that case, meeting, meeting, well, well done, all. I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thanks for sticking it out, well beyond your point of time in the agenda.
Yeah, I always get a question, shocking.
I think, but did the public kind of dropped off?